All right, so I'm gonna call the Simsbury Plan and Condition Order 703. Bill is not, oh, so let me see, so Bill is absent. I know Joe texted me that he wasn't going to be here. Oh, Julie. So, well, given that, though, we're gonna seat Marcus and Craig tonight. So that gives us a four inches of room. All right. I can walk us through the minutes. I did review the minutes from March 28th, April 25th, and our special, well, our special meeting on the 25th and May 2nd. I did not see any corrections. Did anybody see any corrections in any?
I reviewed them also as of Friday.
David, same with you, Craig?
Yeah, the only meeting I was at was the, uh, was, uh, 28th, I'm sorry, 25th. So, yeah, and it was fine.
All right. So I'm gonna ask that then we approve each set of minutes separately if people were gonna abstain if they were not here.
And you don't have to abstain before the meeting, remember?
Correct.
The rules does not make you do that. You may, you may vote on minutes that you are not at if something testifying or agreeing to the fact that the clerk or the secretary is properly denoted in the meeting.
All right, so.
You can always vote, it's always, if you wanna be.
All right, so let's do it. So all of us in favor of approving the minutes as written for May 28th, 2023 regular meeting? Please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any, any discussions?
Maybe then people's 28th, right?
Nope, this is March 28th.
Oh, March 28th, yes, aye.
Sorry, March 28th, okay. Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, pass to your names. April 25th, all of us in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Pass to your names. May 2nd, special meeting from last week, all those in favor of the minutes as written, please say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions?
They're safe.
Safe. So we have four ayes, one extension, and we're open to the task. Okay. And we have new business? Are we gonna do that first, or?
We should do that first, we're not gonna spend a lot of time on it. So the worst selection last night forwarded, referred an 824 action asking me to find comprehensive plan of conservation and development consistency or POCB. And this is an easement that the school district is entering into with Tobacco Valley Solar.
We talked about this.
We have, and it took a long time for the, for the parties to iron the easement out. I mean, the town's attorney and Tobacco Valley, so, so that easement is ironed out, it is in your packet. And it's for a .24, a .24 acre piece of ground, as you can see from the map, it shaded. It is directly adjacent to the back area of Squadron Line School. This is an area that the school has used in the past and is formalized for outdoor classroom and passive activities, and this memorializes that. And so it's certainly consistent with your POCB that, you know, recommends, you know, support for community facilities in the school district.
I, you know, it looks like they addressed insurance and that.
Yeah, the town's responsible for maintenance and it's actually just.
I'll make a motion for a positive referral.
I'll second. Do we need to put in the?
I would, I would, I would recommend you make a finding that's consistent with your POCB.
I would make a motion for an 824 positive referral consistent with the POCB.
Excellent.
How's the wording there?
Perfect.
Perfect.
Any further discussion?
It says.
All those in favor? Yeah, I think we talked about it. I mean, I was surprised it took so long, but, you know, sometimes. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Gonna say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? You're seated.
Oh, I am?
Yes.
I know, I came in late.
No, that's okay, you know, respond. That's, yeah, so you're seated. Do you want us to, you heard most of it.
I did.
Okay. All right, so the motion passes to your names.
Okay, Glenn? So I think continuing our review of the POCB, last time we got up to about page 52, but my notes say that we would go back and look at the natural resources page, I think it was 34? 34. This is the policies and action steps page, just to make sure that we're comfortable with each of those. The same on open space, and then I think we pick up on the ambiance chapter. So the only note I have right now is on B, I would change require use of low impact to intimate low impact. That's the note that I have.
On what page?
Page 34.
Oh, B, yes.
Anything else here on the policies or action steps?
Just curious, that change just is to kind of be more kind of direct and actionable.
Yeah, so again, we talked at the last meeting, the policies are really ongoing activities that never really checked off as being complete.
Got it, yeah.
And so required use of implies a break change which could be adopted, so we say intimate, and it's gonna be ongoing for all sorts of activities. Okay. So then, when you open space section pages 40 and 42, page 41 is on map. Any thoughts or comments on the policies or the action steps here?
Create a tactical open space plan? And I was like, is this us, or that would be Open Space Committee, correct?
Yeah, so I think both of these are the leaders, Open Space Committee.
Okay.
The partners, cultural partners.
Right, okay. And then create an open space fund. Now, we have a small fund that we started with fees and Lula, right, short, I mean, we started that, I don't think we had very much money in there, but we have.
So you have, we have a small, I have to go out and check, so, yeah, we do have fee and Lula policy, or required regulations or standard in our subdivision regs for set-asides for subdivision applications.
Right, and we have.
That's what you're talking about, right?
Right, but we also have money.
Maybe, I don't know what the fund balance is.
It's not a lot, right, please, Hallie, I remember a couple where, I remember the first time we actually used it. Remember being Lula and.
Oh, yeah.
But it's not a lot of money.
Glenn, you're suggesting an annual budget item, right, that's what this is.
Oh, is that what that is?
Not necessarily.
So I was inverted, when I was, so my time inverted, Vernon has a, in their town code, and it becomes a budget item, a $10,000 budget item every year, that 10,000 of the general fund goes into an open space fund. And so you just. Then it improves, then it improves, for future purchases of open spaces. So I don't know if that's what you.
No, what I use when we create here somehow slipped by me, I didn't realize that we had an open space fund, so.
But no, it's only a function of subdivision review, and we're surely not gonna get a lot of new subdivisions in the next decade.
Right.
There's different ways that a municipality can enhance the open space fund in addition to fee and Lula. One way is through annual appropriation of the budget, and the other way can be through bond, voters approve a bond. Obviously, it's more consulting, so they have $3.6 million in their account right now, and they think that in the next five years, they're anticipating generational changes in some of their farmland and so on. So they're anticipating they're gonna need to double that in the next five years. And you start saying, well, I have $70 million available to purchase open space when it becomes available. In order for the town to mobilize to get the bond issue or, you know, find the money, there's a lot of things. So my thought here is, look, let's get the fund created first, and then we'll worry about funding it, not realizing, again, we missed that, so.
So, Neil, I read this again, the only thing I might, I might recommend is to, no, to, number two stands alone there is open space fund. Is there, is there any, is there any value to connecting it directly to the, to the open space plan, the tactical open space plan? Because in B you say, create a tactical open space plan that identifies and prioritizes open space for acquisition and disposition. Well, that's where you can use the open space fund, right?
So maybe a C.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't know whether it should just stand alone or not, I just, I mean, that's the reason for the open space fund, right?
Yeah, 1A says that the proceeds from any town-owned parcel that may be disposed out salt to butters or whatever, the funds, proceeds would go to an open space fund. So now that becomes the open space fund. So.
So I think you just need another action verb instead of create, maybe, which is
Yes.
Enhance.
Enhance.
Improve, grow, whatever, right?
So I think this kicks it from an action step to a policy. So that should become one of.
As we already did create it, yeah.
It's created, so how do you?
Is it classified as a tactical open space plan?
This is a, this is a new concept.
No, it's a different.
Right, we're talking about the funds.
Right.
The open space.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's right, is it, is that, those fees and Lula that are accumulated, however small it may be, deemed to be a open space fund?
I believe it's in there by other, yes.
Yes, I think that's what the language says, as part of what you're asking for when you come up with a budget.
So silly question, just gonna ask, do we really want to, I guess it doesn't matter. No, I'm like, I'm overthinking. It goes back to the town-owned parcels that we might want to sell. Like, I know Bill's comment, I should say, one of our townspeople's comments during that meeting talked about the open space that's not meaningful as part of the open space plan. Do you wanna sell it to a butters, perhaps? I just keep on thinking that, do we even do that? Who surveys? How do you deal with, like, neighbors that have encroached? Like, I could just see that being a nightmare. So that's what I've been thinking about all weekend, and I want to just to talk about, do we really want state doing that, and what is your experience?
Well, we say a couple of things, if you think about it, I mean, one of, one of the, we fast forward to the affordable housing section. One of, then one of the components that Glenn suggested was, can we identify town parcels? So, or, I mean, really, we're trying to identify town parcels that are underused or only utilized, and are not a part of the system to serve several functions. Are, are there, is there value to heading open?
The solution doesn't need to be part of it. I jumped on the solution.
Yeah.
I follow that.
I think we should talk about the solution, though.
Right, we should have an inventory, right?
We should have inventory, we should, we should look at all the town parcels that we own, the good ones and the bad ones, the small ones and the big ones, and have a collective understanding of their value, their value for open space, their value for affordable housing info, their value for getting back on the tax rolls, right? So that is something, that's why activities of understanding.
Because that's what I was so afraid of, shouldn't be jumping to selling to a butters. I'm like, can you imagine?
I know.
Your smart house.
Policy to.
That's a good, like, work.
I didn't see that.
Not a survey.
Oh, yeah, that gave credit to your county, probably, because.
I didn't think to be.
That's all I was saying.
Because I've written that many times in this document.
So I am.
That's what, so let's do a survey, and then you go into.
And maybe that's the job.
And that's, right, maybe it's the job of. Well, also, Julie, that's how we got to be in Lula, because people were like, oh, we'll do a set aside, and we're like, well, this leads. No, really, and so that's when we started saying, no, we don't want that, let's, let's take the money, right, and, yeah, so part of that, yeah.
You're gonna have a range of scenarios.
Yeah, that's right. Right.
Yeah, it's just the inventory.
Right, but you have a range of scenarios of how they could be utilized for purpose.
Right, exactly.
And you're looking at R15, or the R4, that like, I guess, solution. It's possible.
Yeah, I think it's, so, all right, so I just wanted to, so it is already, so I don't know, maybe just that, like George said, create, take that out, put in another action.
So my sense is that the taking out of the verb create doesn't make it an action step anymore, in my view. And I think that my thought to share with you is that we change it to say something like, enhance funding for the open space fund from the operating budget and/or municipal bond. Goes into a policy statement, and this is a recommendation, doesn't have a specific date, and we can continue to urge the worst likely board friends and others to money in there. Some communities donate the real estate transaction fee from the municipality to those kinds of issues, like your market funds.
Their way is right.
Their option. But I think let's start the conversation.
So I bought the fund.
So, Glenn, would that then go on page 40, you're saying, rather than on 42?
Yeah, so what I'm trying to do in terms of a policy is to say, these are good things that we should be trying to do over time, and an action step is a clear concise task, and if we did not have an open space fund, then just create the bucket.
Right, but now we have the bucket, so let's go.
Now, if the issue is, okay, if we'd like to enhance the funding, if we wanted it to be an action step, we would say something like, put a million dollars in the open space fund this year. And that's so specific, and it's hard for us because we can't tie the select. So I think a policy to seek ways of enhancing that funding is gonna serve us well, and hopefully.
The action step in 1A and 1B is the most important today, because you can have all this, you can have all the money, but if you don't have a prioritization and identify parcels that are valuable to us, then that doesn't matter.
And maybe parcels that sort of nobody would want, right?
Right.
So in 1A, do we want to just simplify that to just say, identify the town parcels and like, create the inventory? Instead of saying may contribute or not, like, do we just do stuff A as the inventory? And then B is the identification prioritization? Maybe I'm just being too black and white. Because I feel like we talked about. Identify town-owned parcels that may not contribute to an overall open space system.
Yeah, well, I think, I think we're saying, I think we're saying that because Memorial Park, metal wood, we don't need to itemize those in an inventory. That's so, and maybe we do.
Can I say one question? Would this also include the PA 1990?
No, that's different.
Because that's not considered town-owned?
No, actually.
PA 490, which we're gonna talk about a little bit, is an assessment reduction program.
So that's private property.
I think we have to talk about that, so.
Yep.
Right.
Right, and that should be connected to the overall open space fund.
Yes.
It feels very disconnected.
Yes.
Right now. Do I have my hand motion?
There is a. He ate 490s.
But I mean, in a.
But there's a reason. I think a part of that is, that we would recommend that be a 490. Could also be.
But I'm still.
As a prioritization, but it's not.
What, what he does.
It's not publicly.
It can be part of that policy. But it's not something that we could sell.
Or use for a different purpose.
No, right. It's, right, spacious?
I'm also now looking, as we keep repeating the phrase, all of the tactical space plan, I think there's no people who wanna try to find some alternative wording there. We don't use that phrase anywhere else.
Now, it's a brand new term, and our friends at the open space committee may have a comment on the word tactical.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, how about open space plan? Does it, are we, they have one.
They have one, I guess.
Oh, so we're saying it's add this to it, or get busy and make it?
Well, I mean, this, this particular is really trying to identify town-owned property, that's the key.
Yeah, I think it's town-owned property, but the issue is there are plenty of town-owned properties that contribute to an overall open space vision, right? Those other properties that we acquired in years past where we really weren't quite sure, but we were kind of getting our.
That we don't know their purpose, right?
Or.
So can we say that? Can we say town now?
How about strategic?
Strategic to me is the upper level, so what I wrote down was create an action plan or a program. In other words, we've identified the properties, the next step is now, what are we gonna do?
Right, are we, are we, again, we're just talking about town-owned property? So just say tactical open space plan for town-owned.
Right, that's what.
For town parcels.
Yeah, that's what I was meaning to specify, because I think if you say that, then.
Now we know exactly what we're talking about.
Because then I think open space would have, right.
So if we're talking tactical, it should be the inventory of all properties.
Anything owned by the town.
Anything owned by the town.
By the town, and they are dispositioned aligned to the open space plan or not aligned. Like, I think we should.
I don't know what has to be aligned by the.
Well, we're talking about preserving open space, so I feel like what we should do is, you know, tag them as that, yes, they are part of that overall open space plan to do the connections, because then we're focusing on the positive, what we're trying to preserve, not what we're trying to sell.
So Julie, I would just say that I don't think you need to characterize how you're gonna do the study yet.
I think get that working.
Let's do the inventory, and then we can decide how we categorize, what, what levels of categorization we would use.
I mean, there's more than one.
Okay, so. As I read it, it says, identify town-owned parcels that may not contribute to an overall open space plan. I read that as, we're gonna go find the parcels that are not part of the open space fund. I feel like you need to find them all. All town-owned plans. Properties.
But if they're all.
I think it's just wording.
It would be very nice to have a full tactical one, frankly, that I don't know that we actually had in that place.
Some kind of, that should be perhaps not added here.
But wouldn't the open space committee know where all our open spaces?
I think they could. You think the town should know?
No, because they're not all in place, you know, the subdivision, the little, the lot that was never built on that, that some, you know, family gave to the town, and he accepted it in 1972.
For parcels.
We all.
Right, I think that's exactly, yeah, all right.
Anything else on the open space policies or action steps?
Yeah, no, it's. All right.
Now, my notes take us up to page 52. This is now, yeah, the chapter about 1990, the community ambiance. This is now the conversation about PA 490 or undeveloped land. So the PA 490 program, going quick, is a assessment reduction program that was adopted by the state in 1964. And it's because the pace of suburbanization at that time was causing growth to happen in suburbs. Taxes were going up to build schools and other things, and because taxes were going up, taxes caused homeowners to put, sell their land because they couldn't afford it anymore, and so we started this vicious spiral in terms of cost, et cetera. So the state created this program, it's got three, it's actually got four components, farm, forest, marine heritage, what they call open space, but it's really local option. As part of our work on this plan, we realized that we had lost track of the original authorization for Simsbury's PA 490 programs. And the assessor had gone through an evaluation and reconfiguration of the program. So at the present time, there are no parcels in town participating in the open space program. And there are parcels participating in the farm and forest sessions. In those parts of the program, the criteria are set by the state, as are the assessed values. If you end up with land, if you are a farmer and filing a schedule out for farm income, you are eligible to put your land in the PA 490. The tax assessment is reduced, and taxes are low. In a farm program, you have at least 25 acres of land, and you have to have forest management plan. And then at that point in time, you get the state criteria, and again, you get a reduced assessment. There is this other option, a local option, where we, as part of POCB, can adopt or recommend a program provided it's adopted by the legislative body, the town can set up a new program. So if Simsbury is going to do this, or refresh it, now is the time and place to kind of have this conversation.
So I, I have a question I will ask.
Okay.
Yep.
So it says, as of 2023, there are no properties still using the local option component, and then you have open space assessment. I thought it, so as of 2023, there are no properties using the open space assessment. I think it's specific, right? So I wasn't sure, using the local option component, they're not using the open space assessment anymore, right?
They were at one time.
Right, but you're saying as of this year, there are no properties, and I'm saying, you can just say, using the open space assessment, rather than saying the local option, and then in parentheses.
Okay.
Right? So as of this year, there are no properties still using the local, the open space assessment. And then it talks about the criteria may not have been used, it's not apparent. So I was like, do, do we wanna say that, or do we wanna, you know, and then do we wanna make a recommendation that the town come up with criteria? I mean, is this where, no.
It's our job to come up with the criteria.
Oh, we would come up with a, okay, that's true.
Because that's what helps people decide if you block.
So then we should say that in here, right? We're saying it doesn't make recommendations for the properties. So do we, or do we, so do we.
Glenn, do you wanna talk about what work we're doing? This kind of leads us to a.
Communities that have done this.
It's a mapping, so we're not really ready to talk about it, though.
So for farm and forest, those elements of program take care of themselves. The state has established the criteria, and it's all well established. The open space assessment, which, again, it's not open space, which is why I try to call it local option. Is a situation where the criteria is set locally. Towns essentially, over the years, have done it one, two ways. One way, they identify specific parcels, it could be Simsbury, it could be Water, Water Company's tax exempt, so they, right, sort of lower tax or other situations or scenarios.
I was gonna say.
At one point, I think they're actually inappropriate.
Land trust.
A little bilateral thing, was it?
Land trust property.
It still is.
A little landlocked piece somewhere in the middle of McLean, Jefford, Game Refuge, and it isn't owned by them. So there were nine parcels that George and I looked at them that week, there was no rhyme or reason. So some towns identify specific parcels, and other towns, and I would say more towns fall into this category than the other, have said, any residentially zoned parcel of land in town which could be developed in the future, it's big enough to be subdivided, is eligible for the assessment for the excess acres that they could cut off and so on. And so George and I have started a mapping exercise with our mapping consultant to look at the size of the parcel of land in its zone, and whether or not there's enough land area there to be potentially developed in the future. And then another analysis said, well, hang on a sec, some of these parcels are mostly wetlands, watercourses, floodlands, that are, you can't develop them anyway, they're probably already getting a reduced assessment because they're not billable, so does that accomplish anything? And we're sort of looking at the maps, and we've got some questions about it, and whether or not, is there any value in Simsbury in this program?
So that's the simple, I think, Glenn and I would, would, would like to ask you, I think, the broader question, which is, is there value to the fundamental purpose of that program to our community? Meeting is intended to delay development, I mean, you get a reduced assessment because you're not developing your property. That's the reason for it, the reason is to kind of, not preempt, but to delay, is that?
What?
You know, it's to delay development. So, so the question is, is there, is, does that fit in to our overall policy approach? Now, you take the more aggressive. Now, you take the more aggressive other end of the spectrum, you might come to the conclusion that says, hold it. We don't have that many parcels left for development anyway. Maybe we want those parcels to be developed. Right? So why would we, why would we give a reduce, why would we encourage a reduced assessment? So I I think, I think that's what you have, what I'd like you to get your arms around, which is, is there value to the program now?
See, I'd like to see what properties, that's the thing. I can't make that decision.
Not that many properties is what we're going to want.
Thirty percent open space.
So if it's.
We already know we only have ten percent that could be developed. Out of all of our parcels, there pretty much are fifteens or whatevers.
Some of these are, you know, are are, you know, properties that are a little bit larger, five acre tract with a single, with a half, with one house on it.
A bunch of lots up on Pilsfordshire.
Yeah.
So.
For instance.
Interesting.
But there's also parcels that, I'm trying to think of the road, there's the Simsbury farms that moves around.
Right. So now that you mention that, that's part of the loop. So it goes back to if it's going to help do this overall connectivity.
No, it's a private road out the, where the road.
Oh, huh.
Yeah, huh, huh. Thank you.
The other one's Applewood, I think, too.
So there's just situations here that for other purposes along the way, that ended up being oversized parcels. Now, the way the assessor normally assesses parcels like that is that if it's in a one acre zone, one acre, forty thousand square feet, whatever, is assessed as a quote building lot and the land after that is excess land. And the assessed value for that is significantly less than the building lot. And then after that next lot, you're into excess, excess land type. So how much difference in fact could it make or would it make? I don't know. So I think George and I were starting this conversation, trying to start to look at the map, trying to figure out whether or not we've got good information to share with you. And then at that point in time, get your feedback and we could also follow up the assessor and say, okay, what would the, would there be a meaningful difference on these parcels or not? It's just five blocks.
Right.
A lot of time on it for nothing. It's, it's part of the function of the P O C D. And I think Simsbury did it for years. We ended up with nine parcels that had no rhyme or reason, we couldn't even figure out what or why. The assessor decided that we were going to move everybody out of that category into the others. That's been done.
And for the balance of of those nine, those nine parcels, I think seven of them were, could qualify for farm or ag or a reduced assessment because of environmental conditions or. There was really like one parcel and that, I don't even think we heard from that owner when they lost the assessment. They had no contact. Didn't react to the letters from the assessor. So I'm not sure what I'm saying with all that. I just, when you look at your map, I just.
I can make a decision unless I know what we're looking at.
So again, I think part of that framework is, are there parcels that we wanted discouraged development on and why? And therefore they should get a reduced assessment.
Yeah, I wouldn't use the word discouraged, but I think the idea is relieve taxation as a reason why a parcel might be developed. You know, provide some tax relief, if you will, for them to keep it in undeveloped state. But I think what George is suggesting here, and I would agree, I think is to take that P A four ninety discussion, move it offline. We have some additional research work to do. We'll be ready to come back and share something with you, which will then involve your input, perhaps from the assessor, and decide if we're going to recommend it in the P O C D or just say at some time in the future, the P O C D could be modified to include this program.
Okay.
We're not there yet.
Okay. Because that's, I have a lot of questions on that. So that makes sense. I'm fine with it because I.
You just generated this map this week, so.
Make a decision.
I think I got an email that they're going to create that map viewer thing so you and I can actually sit down.
Yes.
Collect through the whole.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
So there was some confusion on the last P O C D that the feeling was is that the future land use plan and the open space plan actually suggested this. And so in this P O C D, we are suggesting that we create the map on page fifty three, which makes it abundantly clear that these are the forest parcels, the other farm parcels, these are the ones that are joint. And if we in fact have any open space parcels, those.
Those that are.
I consider should be included. So that brings us now, I think, to page fifty four. The other function of the P O C D could be to recommend village districts. A village district is a special type of zoning district in Connecticut where the commission can exercise, the zoning commission can exercise aesthetic controls. And legislation only enable this when, number one, it's recommended in the plan of conservation and development and the unique characteristics are described. So I think the Simsbury center zone, I don't believe is a village district. The sense in the past has been that the designer review process has been effective. Should the zoning commission wish to establish village districts in the future, the P O C D supports that strategy also.
So Glenn, legislatively authorized aesthetic review, I have a question mark. That's, I didn't understand that sentence, so.
So if if a developer came in, if Ruby had as a zoning commissioner, developer came in and you said, well, I don't like the design of your building. You can't turn it down for that reason, even if it's a special. On the other hand, as you know and understand, design is critically important to development. And if we had a charming village center, for example, or something else like that, a village district gives you the ability to say, your glass box office building doesn't necessarily fit into the design of our traditional moving village center. So we're okay with everything you're doing, except the building design. You could deny on that basis.
But each of those, let me ask this, do each of those, if if we were to so designate village districts or wherever they are, we town.
Or village.
Later. Where, would we need to adopt specific design guidelines? We have townwide design guidelines there. We take any commercial development or any multifamily development, no matter where it is today, we don't have designated village districts. No matter where it is, goes to designer review today.
So I work with a number of municipalities to do this. We don't need to have detailed design guidelines, which majority of towns I've worked with, you simply insert a paragraph in the regulations that says in accordance with the two J of the Connecticut general statutes, this area is hereby designated a village district. But um, it created that connection. The issue is that if I was a competitive applicant, I'm coming to see you and you say, okay, you gotta go zoning commissioner, you gotta go to designer review first. Attend the meeting. All right. I don't even bother it to me. I don't, I don't care.
Advisory, designer's advisory.
That's, that's the key word you just used. But they say, we're going to send a negative referral or we're going to suggest to the commission that, all right, now we go back to zoning and now's the time for the action on the application. If they try to turn me down for aesthetic reasons, I'm going to save it in court. You don't have a leg to stand on unless it's a village district and then you don't.
Does that happen in all building opportunities or are there some exceptions?
No, it's in the designated village district area. So I call it the Teddy Roosevelt strategy. Teddy Roosevelt's famous quote was, you know, locks off the military. When an applicant knows you have a village district in place, that you can turn down for aesthetic reasons, they're paying very close attention. But somebody who's been very successful over the years with their design review and some of the stuff they've done. So we're, we're kind of walking on a razor's edge. We could recommend it, but where? And later on in the plan, we talk about, we talked, we talked about tariff, maybe possibilities for these types of things.
But the only thing that concerns me is that it's very hard to explain the justification for doing it within the P O C D. I think it's a, you just had a long conversation about what the value is. How do we?
Try to enhance the maintain community ambiance.
Yeah, it makes a sense of place, right? I mean, that's what we're talking about.
I mean, it's analogous to protecting open space, protecting inhabited space.
Can you do a call out on it?
Yeah, so. Later, I mean, it's, do you? So hang on, in the next section, I'm just going to go over a short tariff bill and we've decided to call it out here as a tariff bill. Yeah, so page seventy, just over page seventy percent. Action step number two. So action step number one is a special study of tariff bills to evaluate certain opportunities. It's never really been kind of looked at in terms of the zoning and the lot sizes and the setback, all the other stuff's going on. And then upon completion, consider establishing a new zoning district for tariff bill to implement recommendations, possibly including establishing a village district. So technically, the statute requires that the P O C D identify the characteristics which we're trying to protect our hands. And it'd be my thought that the way to do this would be as part of the special study, all of tariff, we thought, et cetera, is that those characteristics would come out, those studies would be endorsed.
Just do those one at a time, essentially.
Something like that. It was hard that you would lay the groundwork there. The statute is there.
Just a question, right, if you declare a district a village district, is there an opportunity cost to do that? Is there a downside? Does it?
Heightened, heightened review is a, is a.
Is it, is it?
Wouldn't undermine any of our economic development objectives or?
Right. It might, because if something was proposed, it didn't fit with the. There's always that balance, right, that we're behind the strike.
Don't you get more economic benefit from, you know, establishing retailer business in an undeniable sense of place? You know, I want to put my coffee shop there because, you know, now that it's a village district, there is a certain aesthetic that is main thing. I think it's actually a hint. I was thinking of the storytellers college.
Yeah, you can't stick that in some strip mall in the middle of, you know.
Lasting very.
It would San Antonio, Texas.
But I mean, that's, you get that because of that sense of place with me saying.
I support it. Yeah, but everyone was talking about.
Controversial.
What's everything that's on social media today. Regardless of certain. Even the the sorries of the Denver towns, like the bigger buildings that just don't fit into that.
So that's what people really want in this town, you know? Yeah, nobody cares if it's a rental house.
No, no.
Okay, so where do we keep that paragraph?
I think so. I think George and I, I think the idea here is that there's certain places in the P O C D where we have, we have very much demand for a sidebar session.
Yes.
But I actually think that this one is important enough to explain that I think I can either replace both of these or find ways to shorten both of these that actually have description in that explains the idea that these characteristics that we want to preserve would grow out of those, those studies.
Okay. I do like what you put in for dark skies. I could, I really, I thought that was really good, so.
Yeah, I had a simple question. Why was here for the only place to be, have an action item to consider the possibility of a village?
Just to hear. Tariff, we talk.
Oh, did I get that wrong?
Yeah, we've got what Simsbury, hot schools.
I think the Simsbury center did not.
Oh, because they already have some.
It's a form based code, which means it's already sort of defined what we're looking for.
There it is. I'm sorry.
And I was very conscious, because I think we take it for granted, but you start thinking about, you know, we fog, if Mitchell ever decided to do something else with their property and sort of car dealerships, I mean, what a tremendous sight that. It's possible. And so guiding that appropriately could be three.
I would correct you. Historically, we're doing that now.
They're also doing dealerships up in the.
On page fifty five, you. When we say vegetation, can we put non-invasive in there too?
I'm laughing, I'm laughing, only because Marjorie. I already married a woman, so the word plant, she was all over me. Et cetera. And I tried to explain, listen, if I repeated everything about ambiance or character in every chapter besides the chapter on ambiance, pretty soon. So we've said it, I thought you said it well, and what I think is an appropriate place.
Well, you just mentioned native trees in that sentence. So that's why it was like, would that be a place, native trees and non-invasive?
I think originally what it said was recognizing words of trees and vegetation, the Simsbury's overall part or environmental.
Oh, got it. Okay.
So then I added the word native.
Native, there you go, you got it.
My call out, that was good job.
All right. No, the thing, I did, I think Joe did talk to Marjorie and I mentioned something in open space about getting information to put the sidebar. We were talking, I think, was it native plants and in?
Yeah, I think so. I think back to the natural resources section. I think I I tried to capture the work that they've been doing on polyander pathways and.
But there was something that came up last week where you said it lets, because Joe mentioned it and I think they were going to get to Marjorie about putting something and sending it to to you or whomever.
Yeah, so I prefer at this point, yeah.
Okay, so now that makes sense then.
Healthy playing community. The only thing I would suggest is that I prefer that people not send stuff to me at this point in time.
Okay.
It's now the draft documents and the orgias, the changes that are going to happen, I want to be things that we have talked about. The conservation, when conservation shows up at our public meeting, they will suggest that we add the word non-invasive in every chapter. And then you guys tell me what to do. I don't want to be making decisions at this time.
Even for the sidebar, so if something comes across.
I think they would suggest on page thirty two, a sidebar about.
Well, but we had talked about that.
I had Joe to go get that one.
Right, I put a note in here. Yeah, he was going to talk to Marjorie. So, okay, perfect.
I've got a note in sidebar now for that. I just don't want to be surprised if suddenly word of the sidebar.
Right, right, right. Got you. Okay.
Good. I made a note here on letter F, continue programs. Continue programs to recruit volunteers and recognize hometown heroes and the leaders, V O S, of course, and hometown heroes. Is the recruit volunteers not just for all the organizations in town or?
I'm getting harder and harder. I mean, how many vacancies there are, are there a lot of vacancies on local?
There's some.
Getting capable, guaranteeing more of them.
Yeah.
So the issue is trying to find people, service and boards and commissions are getting harder and harder.
Even Simsbury celebrates struggle.
Yeah, I mean, and they all, like service order, come on, Rotary, they all, all those service organizations are getting.
So the issue that people, obviously it's too big a step for them to take. Like, I couldn't possibly, I feel like my life is full now. I couldn't possibly give you a day and month to issue a grant.
Well, I have to take it as a towns person who wanted to get involved. At first, like twelve, fifteen years ago, there was something in the paper and I read and you could apply to be a volunteer. And I did all that online, filled it all out, never heard from it. Yeah, and it wasn't until a few years later, they said, oh, we're going to create this economic task force development. Another opportunity and I jumped on it. But, you know, if you're not reading the paper all the time and seeing that, you might, your first time you did it. I mean, I think we should, there are so many young people I run into that kind of think that maybe they'd like to get involved, but they don't know how.
Yes.
So this lesson.
Better than sending them to the parties. They want to hear from the town.
Various configurations, yes.
So when I read that, I wasn't sure what it was volunteering for. So should we, should it be elaborated?
Yeah, maybe I'll split that up too.
Boards and commissioners.
Why is priority in yellow?
Priority.
And and in, in the priority column, there's, you got, you got three notes, town, D R B and town.
So the priority column is yellow because we're going to be doing a prioritization exercise. And I only want you guys to know that this is what's going to happen, is once we're done with that exercise, all of these will be populated with numbers. So just make them jump off.
Well, on fifty five, I just wanted to look at, maybe talking about one little addition to K possibly. I read in February, there was an opinion in the book over Chris Kern, written from a young farmer. And this was about that the single biggest hurdle that that causes failure among farmers who are trying to to be, to get into the field and try to grow farms is affordable access to farmland. Now, this was written in support of a bill that was being introduced to the National Congress. But it, it, since we talk about, since we do have least town owned agricultural lands on a multi-year basis, I wanted to know if, how.
since we do, uh, have lease town owned agricultural lands on a multi-year basis, um, I wanted to know if, how anyone would feel if we added one clause at the end of that sentence, that and assist young farmers access to affordable farmland. Maybe that's an overstep, but I, I think.
I think the word young is what's.
Oh, new farmers, okay.
Fair. A farmer, yeah.
Correct, or just farmers.
Aspiring farmers.
Aspiring, oh, that's, that's a good word, yeah, it didn't mean it had to be young, but generally, we've got an age issue going on.
Old, you know.
So you tell HR, correct?
Yeah, I love that.
All right, all right.
Where you know.
So, um, to, at, at the end of the K, of the L.
Oh, maybe you can hold for a new K.
All right, K.
At the end of.
K.
Oh, okay, yeah. And assist aspiring farmers access to affordable farmland. But then I was saying and because we were leasing the town lands of farmers, I don't know, I was thinking of the L.
I think that's really nice.
Maybe you guys want to put it just by assist. Well, yeah, again, I was looking at L because we're leasing the town land, we're assisting, uh, aspiring farmers access to affordable farmland.
Oh. I think agriculture does this kind of program is almost like a speed date, but the whole idea is that towns have farmland and people want to farm. So they might be even somebody in, you know, Hampden or some other part of the state that needs farming, but they would drive the Simmsbury to farm because the land that we have is, you know, and so that triangular piece, George, is out there, it was like Hoskins, Firetown. And we did lease it for a while to, I remember farming in Hartford, that I used to be able, first lockman in Hartford years ago, who was farming that. So if there was land that we could.
Oh, and we do.
We do, we have the complete.
Terry's place.
The town leases.
They have two completely different parcels, I felt, the local farmers.
No, at least it maybe had much for dozen leases on them.
So I think trying to get farmers to farm the land would be awesome, so I'll figure out what I want to have it.
If you'll be, did you catch the phrase?
I did, got it.
Thank you.
I'd be even reading the writing.
Good, thank you.
And then how about on page, uh, action steps on pages fifty-six.
So on fifty-six, the one that I was hoping for a discussion on, related to farmers, about finding a permanent location in Simsbury for a farmer's market. Just pros and cons, we have lots of agriculture, do our farmers want to get their produce and cart it to a centralized place? Is that good for sustainability, is that waste and fossil fuel? I, I don't have a strong opinion either way, but do we need a centralized place, or do we have enough access throughout the town?
You know, I have a question also, and I was, I was going to ask where that came from, because one of the beauties of our town is that we actually have a few farm stores, and they sell each other's produce. So you can get Tomato Ice Cream over at, um, the farm that.
Roseville.
Rosedale.
Yeah.
And you can get products, produce from other farms over at, uh, at Tomato, and, you know, we don't have to wait till that day of the week to get fresh produce, because we've got it, you can have C S As, you know, even with, I don't know if Dr. George Hall Farm still does it, but I, I've often though, we didn't need a farmer's market because our farmers have markets in town. I, I didn't know that.
It's very, I, almost the other way, which is, in, 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 in lots of towns, the, the farmer's market is a, is a place of civic engagement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a place you go on that Saturday morning, and you see everybody, and everybody's there, there's a vendor painting kids' faces in the corner.
I see that at Rosedale every Saturday.
Yeah, I guess, but I mean, I don't, you know.
But you're very, we do, we compete with our local farmers.
But they, because you said that we would drag all the produce.
I would get their input.
So I actually, if, if, if farmers aren't collaborating for.
There is a farmer's market in Simsbury, I know, I know people. Does it still exist?
Yeah, it did last year.
True.
Yeah.
Where?
I thought it was down on.
Yeah, like where Levon and right over there.
Yeah.
Oh, that is it.
They haven't been around in a while.
Uh, they would just.
Oh, I thought it was. So we had it, and it wasn't a draw, it was a draw, because I know people that went there, they looked forward to going and they went. So, I mean, I went there once, and I thought, wow, not much.
Yeah.
I think there's places that don't have our resources to shop farm. Yeah, but what you said is the best thing, we should ask the farmers, really.
Yeah, good idea.
Because, you know, if they're already putting their goods to market.
It might be people from outside too that come in, and it, it's not always just produce, it's people that may hunt and people that do other, and it's not just the farm, but people that are farmers. No, no, that's what I'm saying, so I think you could ask the farm, but it's not just the. Right. So like the honey, the, the.
No, I think, I think it's fair, I just wanted to bring up our conversation.
Didn't you write down as an action step, which means it's definitive thing to do this, it sounded a little, seem to hear a little tentativeness? And so I'm wondering if it backs. You know what, we should explore, I think we should.
Yeah, explore, yeah, that's better.
Maybe explore.
Yeah, that's better.
Investigate something.
Yeah.
And then that allows the gathering with the local community.
All right. Instead of buying.
And I got to tell you, as a working woman, when, when they would hold the farmer's market, when I was at work, I was like, ah, screw that, I'm so glad we had farm stores, you know, because everyone wants for access to fresh.
Anything else on fifty-six?
I've got one quick one here, uh, two B, modified zoning regulations to address L E D lighting and standards for light temperature. You mean color temperature of the lights?
Yeah, I mean, the degrees.
So, yeah, so that, I would, I would just, you know, I think there's enough people that understand, uh, the lighting, and you use the term color temperature.
Is it light temperature?
I, yeah, color temperature.
Thank you.
Or light color temperature, and I would also go so far as to add intensity as well, the intensity of brightness of the lights.
So, I think, everybody's making, there's such a transition going on to L E D lighting, I don't know whether intensity is actually the right.
Well, they, well, they do have different intensities, you know, there's brightness, uh, measured in, in, like, equivalent wattage or? Or foot candles, foot candles.
Let me go, let me read back up on this, because I thought the transition that was going on was not one of the intensity level.
You could, you could add intensity, but I mean, it, it certainly is a, a relevant zoning term, because you don't want your lights too bright, and you want them pointed in the right direction, and you want the right color temperature, and those are just three words that you could, commas between.
Because we've got the diagrams with the lumen levels or something, yeah, for L E D light, so this is measured with foot candles? I thought it was to go for the thing, the transition to lux they call it now.
Yeah, we're still getting the photometrics with, with foot candles.
All right.
Yeah, but foot candles is more of a, yeah, foot candles is more of a cinematic term, but.
Yeah, that's, that's the matter, we get.
Yeah, so you use that, yeah, so you use that for.
First, we use intensity.
Yeah, but intensity is a broad term, that's all encompassing.
Yeah, I think the temperature, the color temperatures is also a thing. Got it, thank you. All right, chapter seven. So, uh, this chapter, I think, has always been sort of a key one for the P O C D, um, and I think the idea here is, again, we tend to take for granted the fact that Simmsbury has as many places as we do, with a sense of place, and I think nurturing and enhancedness is an important, uh, element of the plan. Um, so, uh, just to kick off, if you will, is just to talk about these areas, and so the map on fifty-nine highlights, uh, these areas.
So, we talk about Hoskins being on fifty-nine, but we don't call it out on the front page, don't know if we want.
Okay, one second, are you ready?
Are you mean here in terms of pictures?
On the pages.
Yeah.
Yes. So that's like the ice skating rink in Big Line. Yeah, that's right, okay.
Is that a sense of place over there?
I guess.
Yeah.
Still got hope for it.
Now, there's an op.
No, I'm so, in your sense, it's a place, it's a place.
It might be, it might be a village center, but it's a place that has.
Yeah, I think somebody's going to say something, if you don't have a picture of Hoskins.
Yeah, I'm with you.
For sure.
Group law.
I know a little bit.
Group law ambiance.
I took that for a chance, just popped up. Everyone knows that Dunkin' Donuts on Saturday.
Oh, I'm a big shopper there, I'm not saying, I'm just saying the ambiance, so it's, it's retail, it's economic development.
But it is a part of, yeah, it's not a village center, but it's, yeah.
Places with a sense of place. I mean, I'd like it if we, if you get it more kind of ambianty, you know, because we can't say, give it some character.
What do you think's going to happen?
You think so?
Over, over time, I mean, I think, you know, whatever happened with Wagner's site, and then this.
Yeah, I mean, think about it, remember, it's the, the biggest available site in town is up there, seventy-five acres, just north of there, between Georgia Crossing and Nysley.
But doesn't it, isn't it kind of, they don't just want to put, you know, we want to, they were going as random retail, just come and show.
Target, we got to do a spot at Target, they're sure.
It's going to be hard.
I'm ready for the trade in that one.
I do, yeah, Trader Joe's.
No, this.
Well, maybe we do have one in the valley.
Costume.
Wagner's.
Trader Joe's.
Leggins.
We have their demographic.
Just throw it up there, just around the field. Sorry, I covered.
Trader Joe's should have gone to Andy's.
That's, oh, wow, I thought I was the only one who felt that strongly, that would have been a freaking deal.
Or Queens.
The parking lot would be perfect for that.
I've always had.
All right.
I'm on very sexy.
Let's get focused here.
Sorry, um, 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 um.
Is the Simmsbury Center, the Simmsbury.
Oh, we're going to go back, we go back.
Yes.
All right, because they, and the.
That's what we call it, that's what we call it, it's called the Simmsbury.
Simsbury Center Code, but it's form-based code, okay, perfect, I just, I just had that question, okay.
So what is the right term, what do you guys decide?
No, no, just, I, I, I say the Simsbury Center Code, this, it's, it's form-based code, but it's called the Simsbury Center.
It's a sense.
You had a question on fifty-eight.
I'm going to say it back, I'm just ready to put in.
All right, anything on sixty or sixty-one?
So, now it's mine.
I, I don't. Funny, both the last sense on page sixty. Yeah, I throw it at my daughter, I was like, I'm not going to think it's truthful, but it's also, why are you criticizing ourselves?
Right, I, right.
So what do you think?
Should we leave it out?
I don't think it.
I might have added that.
Yeah.
Sure, I think I might have added that. So, I think I was just pointing out the fact to you that it's been rare, you know, we haven't had a lot of new construction in Simsbury Center, after doing a dredge twelve years ago, that's all.
Well, this is maybe all the economic conditions that have happened, I mean, we really had that one development going in and.
The big problem with Simsbury Center is lack of land, and we're going to talk about it in a moment too, but I think that the challenge is you've got property owners who have been property owners for years. Is the last major development Simsbury Town Shop, is that the last?
Well, no, I mean, Barbara Coke that was approved, the, the, the hundred seventy-five Hens just north of the pack, that, that, that was, you know, the Simsbury.
That's a good one.
Supply during that review process, and that should go to construction projects this summer.
So it was used. So maybe we should just take it out?
Yeah.
So that was the question.
But at least it's there for when the time comes to develop some.
Yeah, all right.
We did it in two thousand nine.
I know.
We had, I know, it's beautiful, but we just said that the conditions have changed dramatically in the last five years, but we're hanging on to this process that we did when my in-laws were still alive.
Right, but what is it that, about that code that we?
I put it in perspective, like, I didn't live in town, they went, and now I'm in town, so I'm just putting that in perspective, like, it's a whole different flipover that we've had, so.
I don't know, what do you feel about the code that is no longer, that has changed?
I don't know.
But we have.
I think it's beautiful, I just wanted to put it out there, like, we, we're talking about it being evolutionary, and how things are changing a lot. But we're still hanging on to the process from two thousand nine, and we haven't used it.
It was, well, we did, we used it, as George pointed out, for the, the, what do you call it?
Plaid.
Apartments.
It was a plaid, and then it got some, it got some old, old term approvals at the end, that they weren't necessarily form-based or urban design.
Do, do you feel we got a good result or not?
Let's see, let's start.
The original plan, is anybody besides you in this room saw that what was originally proposed?
Yes.
I still have those plans, I still have.
They were beautiful, we were all, yeah.
Oh, gosh, we were all ready to move.
Yep, hey, we were, you're right.
Can we?
Yeah, now, gun, or what they. An interesting sentence.
We were playing, we were playing like a fiddle, because based on our, based on the, all of the boards going, yeah, 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 we want this, we stay up the price a million bucks.
We were looking forward to.
And that's why they had to cheat on what they're here. So we get played like a fiddle.
So I'm on to page sixty-seven.
I had, I can't read them.
Seven is a, um, is a, just a big discussion over the centers of, right?
Yeah, so everything from sixty to sixty-six is really sort of a repeat of the chart and the outcome, and I do think that the graphics will help people visualize and understand the opportunities that exist in Simsbury Center, but the problem is that for most property owners, they have to give up twelve to thirty-six months of rental income and incur the cost of development, and it's, it's a big debt unless the dollars are, are huge. So I think the biggest opportunity actually in Simsbury Center now could be the D O T.
So.
So, this page in here has two purposes, number one is most people in Simsbury aren't aware of this situation, and this calls it out and identifies it as an opportunity site, and there's some challenging questions that come along with this in terms of, a lot of the groundwork has been laid to free up this land from the state of Connecticut, but it comes with some strings, and so the question is, what do we as a municipality?
Right, so if you give up all of that parking, whatever, what happens, what happens to the ambiance and the spring meadows and all the concerts that we're doing, look down there?
Well, they're busing people in and out from the high school and junior gym, so it's nice to have that, but I also think it could be beneficial for us to have people who live there that support our businesses, that attract us, so if our goal, our vision for that is a parking lot, then we should have bought the Sims Cross Site. You do for a business right there.
The original charrette never, always assumed there would be construction. It didn't assume that it's going to be, oh, you're not proud of more people walking around.
Yes. So I, I think it's, it's a worthwhile conversation for us to have, so this kind of, this discussion here on this page highlights the site, talks about sort of some of the issues that go along with this, um, and whether the town should actually, sort of, achieve a final on this.
My ten-year-old son heard about this way back when he's now about twenty-four, and he was going to go downtown and burn the plants, because he thought it should always be open. And I remind him, did you tell her strongly anymore, and he doesn't even remember, but he was going to go downtown and burn the plants. He was horrified that she was going to build that.
You know, by the time we finish that process of, the charrette's going to be fifteen years old. And I wonder if you should put the date on it, because people are going to read this, and they wait, I'm reading something that's fifteen years old.
It does happen, it's two thousand and nine.
Yeah, it'll be twenty-four, uh, twenty-four, fifteen years, people are going to say, my lady, this is outdated.
But it's what, yeah.
Or just, I don't care, because all the plans.
One, it's just, it's like, it's just because. The third is, no, and the last, I didn't know, to me, it looked like those should be combined somehow, if it's.
Because.
No.
No.
Yeah, whatever.
Well, I think, so my sense of the process was, is that there, there's been dialogue between the town and the state, our legislative delegation got an act through the legislature which enables D O T to transfer to the town, the offer that came from D O T to the town had some provisions in there which are a little rude, in terms of inability to conduct environmental testing, and price that was kind of robust, so the question in the sense is, could we proceed in some way, shape, or form, can we go back to the bargaining table, I'm not quite sure, but I think it's an issue that needs to be kind of brought front and center, because not much is going to happen in Simsbury if we don't.
Then I also say, should we just list what we're looking for in the fourth one, you know, should we just list housing, business, mixed use, do you know, I don't.
You did raise that, the mixed use, you know.
You don't like the sentence?
I don't know, I just had, I, I know, should we just list, you know, this land could, perhaps they sold their lease for private, used for municipal purposes.
Some of the local departments that I talked to, they felt that they had their eye on the site for their actual municipal facility. I almost feel like the site's too valuable for a municipal facility.
But where were the facilities? But where would the facilities go? Because we do talk a lot about the senior center.
They've, they've done the design, the senior center, they've done the design for it on the century mark. So, seniors don't get out and walk much around the downtown, but the issue would be, another thought was the police station.
What, north? They had six hours to get to?
Well, the tech might be located.
From here.
So the issue ends up being that you don't go to the police station unless you're at the back of the cruiser, or you've got something you need to pick up. I mean, they're out in the community to provide their service quickly, so it's not like a fire station needs to be central for the thing there, so there's different location determinants, and I think a police station, I'm just being silly for a moment, could go out and walk it around. They can run their facility operation from there, but downtown, land for downtown, and what housing can do to support businesses and stuff, is something that a lot of communities don't have. So, I realize it's a testy issue, but I, I just think this is an opportunity to stare it in the face. So, the question, I guess I have for this town, what do you guys think we should do with this? Let it go, let it sit down, because we, we can use it.
I, I think you lay it out in the right way, which is, here's the issue, there is available land, there are options for that available land, um, there are challenges with that available land. The town should focus and figure out what to do with it. I don't know, we have to have an answer in this.
I agree.
Doc, you, you've got a just, a left, a right, a left justification issue there.
So, this is, uh, Main Street Simsbury.
Partnership.
Partnership. And every time I, I talk to the director, it appears that she's already figured out what every parcel's gonna do here, she knows where the, the two-story garage is gonna be, and it appears that some group of people have been really thinking about this pretty hard and long.
In the Blue Light Square, right?
I don't know, I mean, Main Street Partnership, right, if that's called, and, and.
There is a main church.
Am I, is this news to you that there's lots of advanced ideas as to what they want to do with that area? Because I've always said, for years, I've said, you know, can we get lunch sometime so I can figure out what we got in mind, you know, because I'm planning, we gotta know if there's ideas for what's gonna happen.
Sure.
Especially that parking garage, so, is this news? I thought I was the one who was out of touch, because I didn't know what this plan was. I didn't, you know.
I guess I'm not bad at that.
Oh, that's in the charrette.
It is.
The one. Yeah, it's all in the charrette.
It was the one in the garage and.
Oh, this is the charrette, yeah.
Charrette.
If we go back to.
But the charrette was ideas, it's concept, it wasn't anything quick, because when I talked to, um, I think it was Susan, uh, Sarah, it seems like it's kind of. This whole chapter feels.
I, I want to interrupt, um.
This chapter is mostly carried from seventeen.
It is mostly carried, and I know we're not doing like a re, you know, a whole re-ranch.
Yeah.
But even the surveys are from twenty sixteen. Are there any relevance that we can get from the workshop meeting?
Our.
And for the most recent.
I actually had that question to put in here, only because it does, it feels good, and it's sort of like, we're still gonna go purchase this. And we had results from twenty twenty-two we have.
Yeah, because I, I feel like there was some what to build, what to promote. How the table, I just don't remember where the table is of the findings.
Well, remember, these, so these were the call-out boxes that were in seventeen, and the red is because, glad I have the language, in the twenty seventeen survey, residents found. It said in the twenty seventeen, didn't say that completely, it's a survey.
I think as part of the report on the January public meeting, there were comments from people about Simsbury Center, and I thought some of them, they were noteworthy at the time, I just, I can't remember now, but we've got this whole sidebar right here. So once they fix the left justification.
You might have a little room. And it's not left, you know what it is, it's not justification, it's a different text box size, because there's a text box inside the text box, right? So it's a with issue, not a justification issue.
It does. One-on-one side, which is what that is.
Um, so it's just the relevance and.
I, I have that question.
And because that would help assess, do we want to pursue purchasing that land? On land?
The number, the number. But when you start thinking about the development intentions, the town can get this money out and put it on the tax roll, and even if it's a lame league situation.
We wouldn't own it forever, we could, you know, get it and do an RFP.
Or a pretty good C. So the issue is really, I think the checklist issue is the environmental liability. And they won't allow us to test before, so, the conversation that George and I had was to test all of the land around it that we do have access to, and that'll tell us what we need to know.
But really, the action items is the town administration should continue to investigate.
Correct.
Yep.
DOT.
Yep.
Business not done?
Development.
Yep.
And the interesting thing is, the legislation passed, I forget how long ago, but the crisis passed, so is the value, if the value goes up all the time, or?
A cheaper.
I mean, by the, by the American.
I, I don't feel like there's an urgent sense to do, you know, it wasn't part of our plan to update that part. And, um, that would be something to, maybe work on toward the next revision, but I don't feel like there's this sense of urgency that, oh my God, our tax base is falling, and we gotta start developing.
I don't think about this site for that purpose, I just think this is the heart and soul of our community, and somebody that drives through here, I mean, even when we had the, remember the sculptures that were displayed?
Yeah.
The number of people walking around doing that, it, it, it really had an impact on our community, so, if, you, you can talk about the housing down at the Simscroft site. More housing in the downtown area can just be a home run for a bunch of people and.
Oh, I agree, I agree, but it's something we don't wanna run, or rush, you know.
No, no, we shouldn't do it all in the space of twelve months, but I do think having the.
This is the ten year plan. Right, exactly, so it makes sense to do that.
How about page sixty-eight, your policies and action steps related to Simsbury Center?
Um, the only action step, that would be zoning would be needed, right?
I, I noticed here that, for whatever reason on this page, there's no leaders and partners, I didn't get to contain the words in, in white.
All right, yeah, I just had questionnaires around that, that was my only.
Yep.
Okay.
And then page sixty-nine, seventy and seventy-one are tariff bill, and for most of these areas, the strategy again is that these are unique areas with a sense of place, but each of them are unique and different. And so, the action steps essentially are to undertake a special study, I think it's possible that the town staff could, you don't have to hire consultants, you don't have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, I just think another look at these areas.
There's money in the budget for tariff bill.
Excellent.
Over the next three years.
Yeah, awesome, that's. Gracious. And then I think the issue here is to possibly investigate zoning designations, et cetera, I'm not sure that there are a lot of these lots that are not being formed into areas, so maybe it should be over twenty-five or something.
So there's a study and then implementation.
What is over twenty-five?
Forty-five thousand square feet of that one.
Oh, gotcha.
And all those lots are eight houses square feet. They're all nine to four.
Yep.
And the challenge here comes, the side yard setbacks are calibrated for that lot size, which means that anybody wants to do anything with the house, they probably need a variance board, and clinging hardship, should they actually get? No, not, but practically everybody, so you can fix that with the zone. Um, anything else on page seventy? And seventy-two, seventy-three is Weetalk, you'll notice.
One more time, I just said that, but on tariff bill, the, the policy planning processes, it will be your responsibility as planning commissioner.
To what?
To manage the process.
Right, right.
Just wanna make sure that was clear.
Manage the process, like, contribute.
Just like, just like, just like we're managing, I'm glad in this PSCD process, when we do, I mean, our, my plan is to, to, you know, to, to budget or to ask for budget funds ongoing. So, Tariffill first, Weetalk, Northfield, whatever, as we go along, kind of a, you know, a three-year plan, just so that money is there for three years, you know, planning process and then a zoning implementation process for each, as appropriate.
Should we be mentioning that in here?
Okay, the action items are, are, and I'm to undertake a study, so, so, yes.
And it says only commission.
So we.
George's strategy.
Success of.
Oh, I see, that's, all right, you see.
That's actually George managing us.
Thank you.
Oh, my God.
Heard this week, or each year, with my cats, exactly, is that. Well, I didn't have any questions on this. Did you have questions really on seven-two, any?
Nope.
Seventy-two, oh, seventy-four, she's ahead.
It's good, Ray, I'm gonna.
No.
Seventy-four, seventy-five, do we wanna add the step two for the zoning commission to implement findings, just to be consistent?
So, I back off a little bit on West Simsbury and Hoskins, West Simsbury does not have sewer, so as a result, its possibilities in terms of development are a little bit more limited than the others, so there might be some tweaks and enhancements to local zoning, but given some of the environmental constraints out there and the lack of infrastructure, I wasn't, I wasn't sure what.
Part of my ignorance. Do we get the sewer up there?
No.
It's a long ride.
It is a long ride.
Everybody don't want to, you know, by policy, so, we wanna keep that by policy, by the rule, and, and under the law. Unless we wanna make a pretty big change tonight and say, we wanna extend sewer to Western boundaries. I would, I would hesitate to make that recommendation.
Just as. As a resident of West Simsbury, yeah, you know.
I tell you how happy.
The falls under our millions.
On sewer and water.
Yeah, oh, we have water.
So page one, you're saying. See, one is.
Okay, seventy-five, I have one more question about the redevelopment of Wagner property. Yep, this is a strategic, um, is this two step back? Just a question.
No, I agree, it's the number one thing that people, there are two issues that.
We heard it so many times.
I know.
What was that?
By the time this is published, we're gonna have an application in on that property.
Wagner, then that raises the point again.
You found any of them?
Yeah, it's part, it's fairly public, developed, developed three different times, um, so demolish the existing structure and, um, ten thousand square feet in my tenant, three K on the back, and two restaurants, fast service restaurants up front.
Who would mind that?
So I just thought it was.
Yes.
McDonald's?
Like, but not.
Power meeting next.
Drive, so drive, drive through.
Be a good spot for the police station.
Listen, be happy of where it is and that your zoning regulations are, putting it where it needs to go, it's not gonna cause problems, it's at the end of town. Okay.
Yeah, we tried to.
It's a little monkey there, so we'll, we'll, we'll. We'll look at the site, I mean, twice.
I'm on you.
It's, it's, I, I don't think, I.
Won't hear about that.
All those hours, it's so many people talking about.
They did, they did.
Yeah, and five years ago, people were talking about Andes and what an eyesore, and how awful, and, I don't know, did he change it because they put it in the plan, or we talked about it?
I don't have a problem with it, because it was mentioned so often, but I, I, I don't, I agree with the wrong, but I, I agree with the right, I don't feel strongly one way or the other.
It was a question. Are we gonna know what the Wagner property is when it gets demolished in nine months? Other new residents going to know?
I mean, is anyone ever a member?
No, that's why you're here, you know, the labels that are on this little map here are from the aerial photograph, King's Market isn't there anymore, I don't think it's coming back.
It's not.
It's not. It's still there. The ambiance is going downhill on that sense of.
I mean, so we said, okay, so where I grew up out in the country, there used to be a little bar with a Snoopy on it, to this day, we still say, you know, make a left where the Snoopy bar used to be.
These maps are your, they're not your maps, right? You're actually, I'm not going back for it.
Unless, do you have, uh, specific aerial photos?
Do I have, I have to generate this one.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, we've got it every later, I think it's great.
What do you think about putting in white? I don't have a problem with it either, but.
I'll be great for a municipal.
I would have a bean joke and do it.
Wagner's not even on this one.
No, correct what you just said.
I don't like the accuracy here.
Yeah, I'd rather, if you could just hide, hide down screenshots or something as well, I mean. Thank you.
All right, so are we leaving Wagner in or no?
I think I.
I'm gonna leave that sentence.
Yeah, okay.
You do, are you gonna add it to the map? If you do, are you gonna add it to the map?
The Wagner shows, yeah.
If you're gonna talk about the Wagner property, it should listen to the map.
Understood.
Yeah, thank you.
Now, if I get a good, I can put labels in George if I get a good call from that.
Okay, I'll get you.
And then it's terrible, that's.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
At least Wagner's got a good legacy with Wagner Woods.
Yeah.
How about seventy-six or seventy-seven, people look for better resolution pictures.
Etiquette in seventy-seven's tough.
Yeah. Um, is being too vague, do we wanna be more specific, or do we wanna leave it vague?
You're on pizza, you think?
Yeah, be.
Change it to Snoopy Bar?
Yeah.
Well, that's what you're saying, you know, the former Hartford Insurance. I don't know, the insurance calls themselves Hartford Insurance, quite frankly.
That's an interesting, um.
It is, for one, I think it is.
The Hartford or Hartford Services Group.
Yeah, the Hartford.
Hartford Insurance, right?
I, so this is interesting, but this, so this is a new, right, this is not new, that's, that's, that was in seventeen, I am, correct?
Seem to know more about it.
Yeah, it's an interesting, um, I mean, we don't, I mean, do we really promote any other privately held vacant ground in town?
No, I think this is the time where really the, this particular four base code for that site had not yet been developed.
We have, when we have Hartford-Simsbury code, code now for that property.
We do now, but the issue was also, I think there was some sense at that time, that the, uh, site where the insurance building was was gonna be the first to go, not the.
Right.
Right.
The field, that, that was.
That is another project that you will see fairly soon.
What is it?
Hartford South, but the southeast will come in.
Where the building was?
Yes.
The one they did, how were they gonna do here?
We'll find out.
Very, very similar to what they did on the north side.
Same old. You have an application?
Not yet, we haven't developed twice.
Well, wait, wait, remember, this is.
It's not double secret private.
This is the sorrys, right, I mean, we're, we're gonna have more sorrys? If that.
That's what the code does.
I just.
The code is what it is.
It, you know, the, the Hartford-Simsbury code clearly anticipates and lays out a, a mixed use of residential units on both the north side, which we built out, and the south side, that's, that's the expectation.
Well, the expectation has, having anticipated in the charrette is it was gonna be very, you know, the mixed use was gonna really be mixed use. Now it looks like a concrete development with an afterthought, you know, a pen.
That, so we will, when those applications come in, we'll have a revert, or, that, I think that application will come to you, because I think it's, it's part of the referral process in Hartford-Simsbury code portion, and you'll have a robust, robust conversation about it.
So, the. Yeah, it's one of the issues, is that they, you know, they put all the residential rate, and then, you know, now they're saying they can't put the, whatever, I know. Mixed use is not, no, I, I agree.
Well, you're gonna hear from the developers and people like me and Glenn, that the whole concept of this mixed use is, is not the same anymore, it's not, there is no demand for, no demand for retail, there is no demand for office. I don't know how you do mixed use, if there's no demand for those uses, those uses anymore. People work at home, they buy, they, they, they buy from Amazon, it's completely changed, and so, it's, it's different, and I think we don't understand what the next kind of phase of development is.
Where I see a record family in Tampa, in the St. Pete area, is that this remote work has created a sense of place where there wasn't, now that people don't want to department buildings, they want to, they're working from home, they want a Starbucks, they want a, a, a dry cleaner, and finally, there's some area of town that was kind of, eh, that's being. of town that was kinda, eh, that's being turned into a mixed use, real mixed use, all new and...
I'm not sure if you were ready for Tampa dancing, though.
Well, no, no, this was, I'm sorry, this is St. Pete, and it is land that just wasn't being, in a, not high, uh, density either. You know what I'm saying? The demographic that changed things was a lot of high density. No, no, not high density, this is...
Because that's an ongoing policy, and once it's developed, we need to do that on job.
It's a shift of remote work.
Is that more of an action step?
More desirable place for remote work.
What, what you're saying, George, is we're about to be squeezed from the south end of town and the north end of town.
The weather, the heat, these aren't people's fault.
Well, again, I don't squeeze. Squeeze because, you know, I, I drive down Hoppe every day, and I've seen the change.
You know, I had a guy, I gave a speech to the retired men's association today, and that question came up. Round 10 is funny, it's not, I mean, we, you know, we don't create all our own traffic either, you know, I mean, it's pass-through traffic, and it's folks coming from Avon going to Messages, people from Messages, it's coming down, so, yeah, we're congested in the middle of town, I don't have to fix that. And that's, that's your point, that's...
More residential north, more residential south, everything's, they're, they're going on Route 10.
Wow. So, I listened to what George said earlier, I'm wondering...
Sense of places.
The little box in page 76 talks about ensuring the appropriate development of the different areas of Long Island, industry, but then we call out a specific site, so I'm wondering if it makes sense for us to actually figure out a way to sort of merge B and C to talk about appropriate developments in these different segments of the quarter rather than call out A.
Because the Hartford site is, might be worthy of caution, it will be the most impactful site.
Yeah.
But it doesn't have a special code to...
It's the biggest site, it's gonna, and we, I'm talking about several hundred units.
But it's some sort of policy and ongoing program, once it's developed, isn't it done? So, it does become an action step?
I don't think, what would the action step be?
Promote appropriate use, or not Hartford turn, but using form-based code in the approach. So, like, while they're doing the development, it becomes an action step that somebody has to do.
Then C would have to be an action step too. Can I ask one really dumb question that I know that your, your two predecessors have tried to explain to me and I haven't understood it? What did we get from form-based code? I thought it was supposed to be good and it turned out to be bad.
No, um, this is what we get, this is what we, we think we get. We think we, we kinda trade our, our care or concern about the types of uses permitted. So, in form-based code, we tend to, like, we're all different kinds of uses, and we have them mixed, and we make it a little bit easier to get them approved, and I have to go through a special exception process. And instead, we, we develop clear design guidelines. When we say form, we, where the building sits on-site, how close it is to the road, how many stories it can be. So, we get a kind of stricter architectural and form detail in exchange for not, not worried, not being as worried about what uses are permitted.
So, you're saying the sorrys were the result of us saying, build it like that? Well, I mean, the Hartford, right, the Hartford parcel that's been developed is where, you know, when we get accosted at the store going, how did you guys do this to us? So, was that form-based code, is that a result of our base code?
Yes.
So, why do we wanna do that? People hate it.
Everybody's...
You know how fast it sold out?
Number one was the number of units, where the building had traditionally been open, and the impact on the view of the mountain, so it was just stark for people.
Right.
And I think as time goes by, people, it would simulate itself into the community, so...
Oh, let's just get used to the eyesore, I mean.
Well, I mean, anything is an eyesore, I mean, my house was probably an eyesore after it was built, so the issue ends up being any changes to terminate...
I mean, you only, you only...
Again, having this made the charrette, the I, the thinking, where it was gonna be, I remember us sitting around talking about the, the concepts and, you know, the new livery down there and, you know, a real livable area that was very desirable, that people, that would be a, be a tractor for town, and we just, apartment complex of some random buildings at the time. Is that what we really...
So, the only thing I would say to that is we, for better or for worse, if, you know, it went through review process, it went to designing commission, it went to designer view, and it...
Well, and every time I...
Built on my elected, elected and appointed people, that's, that's the process we built for each other.
That's why I'm questioning it now, because every time I question it, is, well, I have form-based code for you, and I'm like, okay, let's not do that anymore. I, I don't think that's a good, I, I think just because that doesn't suit what you might, it, it, I don't think that means that that spec has to be thrown out with the bathwater, do you know what I mean? Because there's form-based code that...
So, I would say, I...
Can you give me a positive example of this form-based code being used and people go, wow, let's... How about the storyteller's cottage? How about that? How about, like, when they came to us and we approved, like, what a great, like, right? That was, you know, those are the kinds of things around...
So, I, I mean, I, so, even though...
No, but it was, but there were things around, I mean, I don't think that one project, you can say form-based code doesn't work, maybe it didn't work to some people's liking at that site, but there's other...
Some people's liking, right?
Well, some people like it, that like George said, it's...
It gets, it gets some of the highest rents in the region and it sold out in seconds.
Yeah. Well, that is a function of the fact that we don't have enough new development, new, I mean, that's what...
Sure.
That was the new development, though.
That was the new development.
There was a new development, that's what I mean, it's a function of, anything new, it's gonna attract people, uh, maybe they'd like something prettier, but hey, it's new, it was, you know, it, there's some people who won't live in anything that isn't new, and we're not building a lot. But I don't think, just because that, I, I just don't think you can say that form-based code doesn't work based on that one project.
No, actually, that's right, I, the best example I have for the form-based code for you, just on a day-to-day basis, even though we haven't had any necessarily allowed of new development in center zone, center zone is the easiest place in town to do business. You don't have to go to any boards and commissions for your approval, you come to staff, we approve your use, you go in the building. So, that, that is one of the, of the positives of a form-based code.
Is that because the buildings already exist?
I mean, yes, yes and no, and other, if, if, perhaps if they were in a different zone, they might have to get a special exception, and if I had to get a site plan amendment with zoning commission for additional approvals, so...
Remember the distillery? That was, that's, that came to us, you know, like, those are, yeah.
I mean, Holly's point is, is an interesting one, and I would just say that we went through a process and developed, and approved form-based code for that property. I wasn't here when we did that, but we did do that.
You pulled the thing.
We adopted a specific order.
Yeah, that was a great, yeah, because God knows. Billy would know of it. It's so sad, that our vision, but the town's vision for that parcel was so completely different than what, why did we even do the charrette? Why did we bother, why did we spend the time for downtown?
What kind of laws was in accordance with the code?
Right.
So, was the code not well-written?
I guess, you know, I guess, you know, as a private citizen back then, I wasn't on the board, I, I think, yeah, that's why I'm questioning this whole code, because it didn't live up to the charrette, and then when I got on the planning, I didn't know anything about that until I was a member of the planning commission and that's, oh, no, no, we can't do this, we can't do that, we've got form-based code, we don't have the flexibility.
So, your objection to that development is a design objection, not a use objection, meaning you, you support residential development on that site just with, with a different design and different architecture, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, I guess my concept of mixed use is mixed.
Right, anthology is there.
That's not...
Are several places in the plan...
It's only about fourteen thousand square feet.
I'm, I'm, again, I'm thinking, you know, you know, someplace where you have to walk around, and shop, and do your driving, maybe, I mean, what do you got, coffee?
We don't do anything with the form-based code on planning commission, correct? No, that's not ours.
No, it's, I mean, it was a zoning process, zoning commission process.
So, is it like Mashpee Commons?
They use our guidance for...
Mashpee Commons in Massachusetts, are you familiar with that? I'm just, I mean, the form-based code, as George says, is an approval approach that focuses more on the end result, like, you know, you say that this, say the zone for retail, CVS comes along, but sometimes you get the wish CVS model that it averages on. The form-based code says, look, we don't care if it's CVS, Walgreens, or anybody else, but the building's in the market.
Yeah.
And so, the...
And should be placed where we want it and the landscape is gonna be what it needs.
And we wanted a whole mess of apartments with some random buildings in front, that's what we wanted, we can't...
The issues, you bet.
No, but I'm like, let's not do more.
It's not, so, it's not because of the form-based code, I don't think, it's because we have big support of residential development in that area.
And they didn't come in with the retail, or they haven't been able to put in the retail, that, that was originally intended.
Right, right, that was all scaled down.
You know, this, we've had this conversation before, where it seems like they never come in to, you know, this, this, build a whole mess of, you know, build what we really wanna build, and when they yell at us enough, we'll stick with odd building in front, and then go, well, no one wants it, because it looks dis...
But even, even, but they didn't do it, but they still got approval from, um, like, the appointed body to not do what, you know, they, and asked, and, right, they got a vote and they lobbied and...
Listen, their apartments are really...
Maybe not even what we wanted, but...
So, the piercing, let's say, for Sinsbury Center to go back and revisit after fifteen years, just to make sure that, you know, we need to tune up, if we need to tune up, let's get it tuned up, right? But...
But my fear is, you know, like you said, the drums are already beating, some people are gonna divide it up and, and before we know it, we'll, we'll be approving more of what people don't like.
But I don't think there's, I don't have any objection, and I don't think it's a bad idea, I mean, it's, it's, there's no reason why we couldn't say, you know, in review, all form-based codes to see, including the Hartford-Sinsbury code.
So, there's three of them in town, right, or is the, is the Hartford, just, just Hartford code is both sites? I thought they were just...
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could add that by, which is...
Please. I mean, am I the only one getting stopped, you know, at the grocery store? No, but I think my...
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and people, yes, and it's not...
Pretty consistent too over there, too.
But I don't think, I can't, I don't put the blame on the form-based code, and I'm not willing to throw that code out, though, because of that one development that ended up not being able to get retail, they've had to scale things back, hasn't been a...
Well, they didn't try.
Well, I, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm not willing to say that fully, I, I think... It's not even integrated in any way with the design.
Pandemic had a big impact, I think.
Yeah, no, that, exactly. Well, the, the design itself, I think, wasn't very, it wasn't mixed use, it was, here's some use and here's some other use. Yeah. But then so many, I mean, that should have been, you know, but it is, so, so then we can be, you know, you could look at things critically when this next project...
And what I'm telling you is, is that, you know, gently, that, 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 our, that concept of mixed use is completely changing.
Yeah.
I don't even know, but Glenn and I can describe what it's gonna be like in the coming future.
The big challenge is this, when people hear the phrase mixed use, often they think of mixed-use buildings, and sometimes a lot of people hear mixed-use site, so the issue is you have residential buildings here and retail buildings here, and there's some proximity, but that's about it, but they're not, like apartment stores, which is kind of what people envision, so...
Well, is when they should have had pictures of...
Of course, right, because that's what people like, but that's not necessarily what government... You should go see Mashpee Commons.
Shopkeepers aren't living over their stores.
No, no.
And even Mashpee Commons, which was heralded in its time as being this wonderful example.
Right, the shopkeepers.
Sorry, I mean, it's...
That is...
So, it's...
Not put themselves.
Am I right? We've been at this for almost two hours, you might wanna think about how we're gonna pull this tonight out.
Yeah, that's what I did.
I mean, unless, unless she wanted to keep working, but I, I can remember...
We're gonna run out of here pretty soon, I think.
Can we do 76 to 77?
It's gonna be a big ask, because we have two weeks, and I'm getting to the next week and the week after, so I'd like at the next, at that meeting, that we're gonna get from 79 to...
How many days?
That's, that's, that's a big lift.
It's double what we did today.
Seventy-nine was?
I have good news, I won't be here at that meeting, so you will be here for the third.
No, we're not meeting, hold it, we're not meeting on the sixteenth.
We're not meeting on the next week, we're gonna meet on the twenty-third. I'm just saying, it's gonna be a big lift.
And then we, I do have it in the calendar, the thirtieth.
I have it too, I just, my thought would be, we're gonna ask other people in town and boards and commissions for their input, to try and give them three or four weeks to have a chance to become familiar with a hundred and thirty-page document.
It's gonna be done on the twenty-third, that's what you're saying.
Ideally, but listen, we're gonna do what we can, and if we end up delaying our schedule so that adoption doesn't occur until October, but occurs November, December or something.
Well, it's almost 10-0, do we wanna go to 9? Do we wanna do it, or would it make it less...
Well, so, let's, let's, let's...
Let me know.
So, I think the housing needs chapter is probably gonna be a talker.
Okay.
So, I don't think there's much... So, is there anything on West Street? This was in the '07 plan, not in the 2017 plan, and it's back down to 2020.
Our, our interview process with, with some other developers, we kind of raised this issue, and wherever, there's, and someone's all over the place there, we don't really have a good plan, but what happens on West Street?
And we're making it more walkable, right?
We are, it's...
There's, yeah, some, some underutilized projects over there too, that we can use a little bit of development.
So, is there, are there, so, what can we do, like, you said, what was gonna be a talker?
Uh, housing, so I think, yeah, eight, nine, yeah, so is there anything major in the development?
79?
Yeah, so, 79 to, uh, A4.
Yes, um, so, we, something was brought up last week, and I think it's kind of all along the same tracks, so, before I even joke about it, it's kind of, um, noticing a, a small trend, and I just wanna go, do we wanna tackle things like page by page, or do we wanna just tackle, like, modernism and...
What?
Let's see, let's go use up the big picture concept.
Okay.
Because then we can see, it was possible, and I would say, well, that's a big issue, let's start our next conversation with that, but, one, look, here, let's see what it is.
So, it's, it's about, I've noticed, again, we have this, uh, DEI logo in the corner.
Yeah.
So, what I'm noticing here is that, that kind of the connection that's made on this page, just from what I was reading, makes it seem more like we're mentioning DEI in this, in the framing of like strictly making it a, a profit-focused idea where that's, it's, it's, it feels more like an investing position rather than the, the core ideas of what we're going, like what DEI is. And based off of the last time when it was mentioned, you know, we, we did say something about affordable housing. So I don't want the reader to have a connection of thinking that affordable housing and DEI are synonymous.
Not synonymous. I think that they...
But there's an intersection there.
There is. But I think that the intersection between DEI and economic development is a little bit more of a muddle. So my sense would be, does it really, I wanted to be thorough and complete in putting DEI in different sections of the plan. But in doing so, I didn't mean to cheapen the thought of what we mean by that. And so it seems to me that this, this is not the most compelling statement, if you will, about that. And so I think in this scenario, I wouldn't have any problem with eliminating that tax because I think in other places in the plan it has more, more meaning and more relevance than it might here.
Yes, because of...
Do you, do you get like the statement or the logo, or both?
It was, it was, it was more the, um, like the, the location of it, like where, when it's being mentioned. Because like when, when we follow up and paging five is mentioned again and in connection to affordable housing. So when I went through the, through the whole thing, it's like the only time you mention it is in connection to affordable housing or in this instance of needing a catch-up. We can make money off of it. Here's what we found.
I didn't think that.
I, and I know that's not what we're saying, but when I read it, that is a, that is a bridge that wasn't hard for me to get to. And if I'm a reader, I don't want us to have that message even be...
So you wouldn't keep, and this is, I'm asking honestly, because I, I kind of liked it saying that economic development would help meet its diversity goals. And at the same time, that might be a way to attract employers. But you're saying you don't even like that statement there?
No, because I, I had some without any context. I'll read this without context and tell me how this feels. And then, you know, in the, in the framing of a chapter, it reads, it can read that way depending on the...
I actually see that.
I'm gonna support Marcus on that. Because you, you read the sidelines and I did. I circled it and it was like, all right, I'll be going back to the definition of DEI. It's variety, it's inclusive mass, it's fair.
I, I think the second statement is stronger than the first.
I do too.
Because I think that's true. I mean...
I do too.
It, it will. Employers want to be in communities that seats me, that are...
I know, but seeing what Marcus is saying, if we're saying that we support DEI because it'll help us, only gonna try destroyers and other stuff.
Right.
Yeah, the motivation's wrong.
Yeah, so that sounds off to me too. That, that sounds off. I'm, I'm not saying that doesn't sound off to me.
Yeah, if we could flip it in that this would, you know, it's meant to make profit off people, but rather it's to give people an entry into town because now...
A sense of awe?
Yeah, I don't think it was meant to be as a project, but I know what you're saying.
Exactly. You know, "Oh, I'd like to live there, but you know, what kind of a job can I get?"
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
Yes, yes, yes.
It's hard to find words right now to navigate through what Marcus has brought up here, right? So I think my...
Just take it on.
Well, my sense right now is that, I'm gonna circle it on my copy here and think about this. Because the issue is, if it's, if it's gonna take two sidebars to explain this sidebar?
Yeah, that's not helpful.
Exactly.
And, and my, my interpretation was mostly, and maybe it was, oh, wow, it was... It's an opportunity for inclusion, which was a... For example, I grew up in a really nice old house. So if there was no opportunity for me to plot my trade there. And so I guess I'm maybe I'm hypersensitive to, "Oh, wow, we're trying to say, hey, we want to have more opportunities for people."
Yes.
If we wrote it like that?
I, I don't know. I mean...
That's how I...
My line normally in a situation like this would be, because I look further away than most people, I said, "My ride home tonight will be my opportunity to kind of process this." And I think I need time because I think...
I mean, you get a good point.
It's a good observation. It's very insightful. Just need to think about this. Because I think our motives were true here. But it's the same thing on the word character.
Exactly.
Our motives were true, but it's kind of like, hang on a second here.
And people say, and so that's an interesting, that's what I was trying to get at. So it's like, oh, right, if that's the way, you, you don't want it to be, that wasn't what it was meant, but it's an interesting concept. And it goes to some way we said last week.
Just put the positive part in.
Yeah, sure. Now, to change it up though, just gonna throw it out there. We talked about those three characteristics or core guiding principles that we're gonna infiltrate the entire plan upfront. Do we need the icons to specify? Because I do think that they're intersected. There's a lot of pieces of livability that has to do with DEI, and livability has to do with sustainability. Do we need the icons? And just talk about, to your point about your ride home and how you think about it. I'm just gonna put it out there.
No, I appreciate that. My thought was that...
Or that you need that there.
Or do you need the logo to say, "We're calling out diversity here. We're calling out sustainability here." Like we, we talked about it as overarching. Do we need to always have...
Hit him over the head.
Like on this...
The logo itself bring up the text a little bit.
Yeah.
Always for...
Respect to the baby.
It's almost like a...
Even the dressing company's...
First grade primer book or something like that, right?
I feel like that's sustainability.
People type of thing.
So I thought it'd be used...
And we don't get it on all of them. Right. Unless we put like the little icons on all of them and talks, you know what I mean? I do keep the sustainability.
Well, interesting enough, none of the action items intersect with sustainability.
I mean, it does make it...
We have all elements.
In every separate of our...
Many are more inclusive and diverse communities. So yes, they're all related to each other, but that's what happens when a principal or concept for me is the...
Please consider.
All right, I'm gonna suggest...
Stop.
You're a smart one.
It's important, everybody.
Yeah.
All right, so my sense is let's break here.
Okay.
Okay. See you guys in two weeks. We'll pick up on page seventy-one there. And I, I don't know that it's realistic to anticipate that we might get to the end, but we have not read it all the way through. If you would have, just in case. But, uh, we'll pick up in two weeks and go from there. In the meantime, I think I'll update the tax for what we've done so far and so that I can have a quicker turnaround time when the...
Yeah.
You guys are gonna not be happy with me. We do have a couple of real items on the twenty-third for regular business, just a little bit of...
Okay.
Are there things next week that could do not on the...
Yeah, well, that's not your...
I, 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 no, no.
Have a meeting special or a Thursday special?
I agree. That's, the ones that are public here, I've advertised.
I think we've got the twenty-third and the thirty. Let's, let's go for that.
We'll probably need the thirty. Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I was planning on it.
I was too.
I mean, after the last, after the last time.
Yeah.
Well, we got the...
I have a favor to ask.
But I mean, you know, last POCG, you're like...
I said, "I won't be here."
We're good. Can you take this?
We want to be here.
Okay. I notice I already took one when we were reading.
No, no, no. They're really, really convenient. They're, they're, they're not even on the chineze.
On page one oh four?
Oh, 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 oh.
Seriously?
Okay.
I'm gonna do it.
I have, I have some action items I wanted to do.
Gosh, Marcus raised another point here that I just want to break.
I'm gonna go backwards.
The last paragraph here on page seventy-nine, we talked about encourages the most appropriate people to develop the community. So Marcus asked me, "Well, what do you mean appropriate?" And I haven't really defined what that is someplace. And that phrase only ended back in two thousand and seven or twenty seventeen is that we just don't want any economic development for the sake of economic development. We want economic development that supports and enhances our community. So we use the word appropriate. Just remember to pick that up a little bit.
Yeah.
So, but...
It's hard for the, the business and development community to know what that means.
He has a back of stellar character.
Right, like...
Appropriate, we come back now.
Yeah, just it's hard to determine appropriate. I mean, I know what we mean. We mean that we don't want the million square foot distribution center.
I don't really get it. Marjorie earlier, right, that every time we do a planning meeting, it's a basic or non-basic. So maybe the issue here is that this is the chapter that focuses on economic development. And the ambiance and sense of place chapter